Okay, I think we'll go ahead and get started. I'd like to call this from our town, a work session, a meeting to order for Thursday, May the 21st, 2020. First item tonight on our agenda is CHA redundant water line presentation. Matt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As I just stated, I'm going to kind of flow through this presentation myself and pull in Stephen Steele with CHA, who's the engineer, who's been overseeing this project. After a conversation with the mayor and vice mayor, they thought it would be nice to bring the council up to date as to the project, maybe a brief history of the project, options that have been evaluated, options that have been chosen, constructability, project funding, and project schedule. I believe you'll find the presentation to be very thorough, and that should be no more than 10 minutes to go through this. And this is for Lori, I believe this is the first time you have seen this, so please, any of you feel free to inject any questions as we go along. Just for some history, in 2011 was when the contract with Dominion Power was signed. In 13, there was a study by Pinoni, hydraulic study for the Morgan Ford route. 14, contract water rates went into effect, Guard Hill Pump Station upgrades completed. In 16, determined, CHA determined, was requested to evaluate additional tank options, and it was determined to be noncompliant. CHA in 17, CHA reliability study was done, and recommended a parallel water route. 2019, feasibility study was done. The purpose was decided on constructability, cost effectiveness, and redundant route. Also, 2019, VDH approved, approval of the selected route and project. So full VDH approval to proceed with design was done in 2019. Also, in 19, town advertisement, interview, and selection of the consultant was done in 2019. And in 2020, public hearing and approval of design contract, fee negotiations, public hearing, advertisement, council approval, and we have, we also have, the engineer CHA was formally retained in 2020. Any questions so far? Are we good? It'd probably be good to show town comprehensive improvement plan and how it relates to the water plan. The redundant water line has been priority number one. It's planning through 2045 demands for in-town residential and out-of-town commercial and industrial growth, out-of-town, outside-town limits, based on a calibrated hydraulic model, and short and long-term town land use zoning comprehensive plans have been incorporated into the design. Additionally, for, to mitigate town liability, just to give you a perspective, the current route 522, average use, lead usage is 650,000 gallons per day. We have about a million dollars, we have a million dollars of storage available. Should a water break occur, in, occurred, which results in no water in the Route 522 corridor, we'll be out of water within 37 hours. And a water break in the river could result in water outage for up to 30 days. So you can get a perspective of the level of liability, and you can also get a perspective of why this has been a high priority for the town of Front Royal for many years. So CHA has evaluated five options over the course of several years, the additional water tank option, Benny Ford and Benny Beach Crossing, Mary Shady Lane Crossing, parallel, as well as electric utility. What we're going to do, we're going to touch on just a couple of the pros and cons to highlight each option that was considered. For option one that was considered, for the additional tank and the upgrade pump station, the pros for that is that it does add six hours or to 2.4 days of storage in the event of a major water line break. It allows fairground tank to come offline for maintenance and lower cost than the electric utility route, which is the last route I'll be discussing. The con of that is that it does not provide a redundant water service to the corridor. So that's the biggest con, and that's why that was eliminated. Option two is the Morgan Ford and Benny Beach Crossing. Those, the pros for that, they're both completely redundant. The cons, it's too long to be cost-effective without new water users. It's hydrologically inefficient. Frankly, I don't know what those next three bullets mean, if you guys need to know, you don't need to ask Stephen. And the last bullet there, it's 2.5 times the amount of the pipeline, so it's cost more expensive. Mary Shady Lane is completely redundant as well. It utilizes existing access roads. The con of it is it's little benefit over the electric utility route. The river crossing is problematic due to the rockfall caves. It's double the amount of pipe and cost of the electric utility route. The parallel route, it's simple permitting and few easements to obtain, so that's a pro. Also, most constructible river crossing, likely with open cut. It's similar cost to the electric utility route. The con is it's not truly redundant. Proximity to the existing water line means it is subject to the same physical, hydraulic, and electric disruptions as existing line. Existing easement will be strained if parallel lines are adequately separated. Permitting open cut may require aquatic studies. So the fifth option, which we've mentioned a couple times, the electric utility route is what they're calling it. This was the chosen option. The pro is it's the shortest route available. It can serve similar new developments as Mary Shady Lane. It's hydrologically efficient, fewest easements, town, county golf course, FNR limited partnerships, or partnership private owners, so it's got the fewest easements, and provides fully redundant service to the corridor. Now, the con is it's got a more difficult river crossing than the parallel line. So in order to ensure a true redundant loop for the project, there had to be three other segments considered. Segment A, I don't know if you can see my cursor, segment A is this red section here on the map, which is the shortest distance, uses existing line work, only one easement. Segment B is this portion here, it's the shortest distance, it cannot run through DuPont. And segment C is loops to jail to provide redundant service. Stevie, is there anything you wanted to add to this slide?
Mr. Teeger, I think it's just important to note that segment C has been recently added due to the water break that we had not too long ago, which had the jail out of service. Had this section been completed, there would not be. And it just makes a lot of sense, while we're doing the overall project, to go ahead and knock this out and make that connection happen, so there's redundancy to that. Very important facility.
Thank you, great point. Any questions from council? I'm going through pretty quickly. Please feel free to ask any questions. Okay, so there are three river crossing options, open cut, horizontal, directional, are two of the options. I don't, if you have any questions on these, we can go over them. The option that's been chosen is to utilize the micro tunneling. It works in a karst topography, is preferred by permitting agency, requires shorter length, shaft dewatering, work extensive, recommended by trenchless expert, and it may, may want to be added as a bid alternate. Can you explain that, Stevie, why maybe it want to be added as a bid alternate?
So the horizontal directional drill is a cheaper option, and it was mentioned in the previous slide. However, if we hit a karst area under the river, which is like an open cave, then they lose the drill bit into that cave, and the crossing is a complete fail. So while it is cheaper, it is also not something that I'm comfortable saying will be 100% successful. The, the next slide down outlines that we would choose this micro tunneling because it is a sure thing. We can go through a cave, we can go through harder rock, whatever we encounter, we're going to get under the river. It's going to be more expensive. So what I would recommend is when we bid this out, we'd bid the horizontal directional drill option as well. Won't cost me anymore, and the town can see how much more the sure bet is going to cost based on the risky bet, and at least you'll have the knowledge of why you're spending more to make sure you get under the river. It's a way for the town to know exactly why they spent more, and if someone asks in the community, what would it have cost to do HDD? If it's a few dollars less, but there's high risk, then you've got all the information you need to inform the public.
The recommendation and cost estimate, as stated, it was the electric utility route with the closing of the loop, and the cost of that, including the, the close, the second section there, is approximately $12 million is what they've, preliminary budget. What we did here, Mr. Mayor, members of council, is if you remember back in August, there was a presentation made that used a 4% loan, and the, the annual payment for that was 653,000 for the total cost over the time period of that loan of 19, 19 million because of interest and principal. What we did is we had CHA provide a couple other scenarios. In the event, the bond is 3.5 million, you can see that the annual payment would be 614,000 with a total cost of 18 million. And at 2.5%, which is a VDH loan, 30-year, 2.5, it's $463,000 annual payment, and 16 million in total cost. Now, the engineering services are not covered by the loan, which that's fine, we factored in, paying that out of the super fund anyway. So I think you'll find, you'll find that this is a, this is a very good number, and it's, it's going to save us a little bit money based upon what we've projected. Any questions?
Just a clarification there, it's the water fund we paid that out of, not the super fund.
Did I miss anything? Sorry.
It's okay.
Thank you. Any questions? Stevie, why don't you explain this slide, if you would, please?
Just trying to give the council members an idea of value of money based on the amount of time that has gone by to explain escalation in costs, and maybe the importance to continue moving forward and trying to get good pricing as soon as we can. In 2011, when 3.5 million dollars was made available through the Dominion Agreement, that 3.5 million dollars would have paid for 3.5 million dollars worth of construction work. So as things have escalated and cost more and more each year, we now are in 2020, that 3.5 million is still at that value back in 2011, because the town was not able to invest that money. Dominion has invested it, and they are taking the interest earned from that and putting it in their pocket, because all they were contractually bound to buy was 3.5. So that same 3.5 million in 2020 dollars is only worth 2.3. So that's one piece of, of the funding. The next piece is the amount of time that has gone by since the original estimate, and the cost of construction increases. So in 2015, some of the council members may have remembered seeing a number that was 5.5 million dollars, and that was, Mr. Tewalk may be, yeah, there were some other council members, but that was the parallel line, so it was a little bit shorter. Nevertheless, at that time, we have bids that show we were getting costs as low as $88 a foot to install water line. The 2020 bid tags we're getting now are in excess of $150 a foot. And that's no fault of the town, that's just how the economy has changed since the bubble burst in 2008. That's 170% increase that we have had no control of. The other big ticket item that drove us to the $12 million cost is the bore costs. Again, that is a very specialized activity. In 2015, that bore cost would have been $1,000 a foot. $20,000, there are less people that are doing it. 2008 kind of knocked off a few, and then as time has gone on, there are fewer and fewer specialists. That number is now $2,400 a lineal foot, 240% increase. So if anybody's curious about how we ever got from 5.5 million to 12, that's the, those are the numbers that have driven that escalation. So I wanted to make sure that you were able to provide that to anybody that asked that
Thank you, Stevie. Any questions from council? Okay, and the last slide is a rudimentary schedule. In August of 2019, the engineering report was completed. In February of '21, the design permitting is expected to be completed by February 2021, and by June 2022, construction completed. So that's generally a very, a very simplistic schedule, and we had a conversation with CHA, and they think it's a very realistic schedule, and there's, you know, I think they had 30 days of pad in that, in that schedule. So that concludes the briefing as it relates to the redundant water line. Just wanted to bring council up to speed of where we've been, where we are, and where we're going.
Really not, Matt. Thanks for the update, and Stevie, good to see you again.
Yes, sir. Good to see you. Looking forward to making this a very successful project for the town of Front Royal. Appreciate you guys having confidence in me and my company to do that for you. Really appreciate it.
Thank you. One more, one more thing, has anybody else got any other questions before we get off?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Councilman Seelock. Mr. Teeger, has anyone approached the power user that uses the most water out there about this project and cost?
Yes, sir. I had a conversation with them. My days have run together. I think it was either Monday or Tuesday afternoon, I had approximately a 30-minute conversation with them, and they're, they're pleased to know about the, the progress that the town's
As we go forward with this thing, are they considering more than the 3 million, or 3.5, whatever?
Yes, that'd be a contractual item that we may want to discuss at a later date, Mr. Seelock.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Second item tonight is tourism follow-up, and other FY '21 budget matters. Matt?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. We just, frankly, we just put this on as a catch-all. We know there was a lot of discussion about the path forward for tourism, and I have, I just put this on the agenda and leave it up for council discussion. I know that there were four options presented. Let me get to them here. Option one, in-house. Option two, outsourced, some functions. Option three A, fully contracted out. Option three B, fully contracted out with committee leadership. And then option four, grant model. I will share with, with the council that the Board of Supervisors had their meeting on Tuesday. They received the same presentation, and at their meeting, it was decided, they wanted, they selected two, two, two board supervisor members to lead the effort on exactly which option to choose, and they were going to request the town council identifying two individuals as well, and that the four, four elected officials meet in an effort to expedite moving forward. The impression I, I receive from the board supervisors is that they are anxious to, to get an option selected and to move forward, and it's the impression based upon the, the last several discussions the town councils had, that they want to get an option to move forward as well. So among the decisions tonight would be, Mr. Mayor, if, if we could get two council members selected, and I will let the county know who the two are, two are selected, and then they can determine the option. But I left this on just for general discussion, Mr. Mayor, so I'll leave it, I'll mute my mic and listen to council.
Matt, I'd like to volunteer for that.
Is that you, Latasha?
Yes, sorry.
Okay.
Matt, I would, I would like to be on this panel as well. I've, I've been fairly quiet about this, and just cautiously, because I wanted to see what the Joint Tourism Board came out with. What a great presentation she gave us last Monday. I'm thoroughly impressed with it. I, I got my, you know, personal preference to this, I guess, but I'm not totally, fully sold on which option that I would, I would choose. But I would, I would love to be a part of this, this joint tourism committee with the county to get this figured out for us.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Anybody else got any comment?
Mr. Mayor, I'd be more than welcome to volunteer for that committee as well.
Okay. Who else?
Mr. Mayor, this is, this is Jake. I would be, I would be happy to be a part of that committee, but would be happy to consent to others, and I think largely in part because I really would like it to be as neutral, a neutral selection and unbiased as possible from the side of town council. And I mean that with, with all respect to everybody on council, but I think that from the different questions asked, the different presentations over the last few months, there's certainly different aspects of this that, that members of council have been either championing or questioning, and I think that that has drawn us into, whether we like it or not, different positions, painted in different positions or different corners with respect to supporting tourism in the town. And so I, I do like the idea of Gary being on, on that committee. I think that he's demonstrated a healthy, a healthy back and forth between supporting town employees and tourism, as well as, as well as balancing the appropriate relationship with the county in our next steps. And I would, I would also support, and again, I mean this with complete respect, but I'd also support Lori as a pair of fresh eyes coming into this, and again, seeming to have had a lot of time spent down in the tourism department, but coming at this from a very neutral position as well.
Actually, I don't come from a not-so-neutral position. I think we're all on the same page. We're all, we all know that tourism is very important, it's how we're going to get back on our feet. I think it's rather odd that you take out the person who's actually gone to the joint tourism meetings, had, sat down and had that same presentation pretty much without the actual presentation with Carrie for hours after the meeting to get her perspective and her understanding and listening to her research. And then I had spent prior to that the time with Megan. Megan was supposed to have presented months ago, but everything was getting rushed along because there was no plan. So yes, I'm very passionate about us having a strong tourism, and I, so, I mean, it is what it is. I mean, you guys can vote, decide, and I'll concede or whatever, but I'm just putting that out there.
I have a...
Mr. Mayor, this is Councilman Seelock.
Go ahead.
I would agree that Councilman Gillespie and Lori would be the, the selection, as Ms. Thompson and myself were quite vocal on the tourism direction, and we already had our personal views totally involved in this thing. You know, we were totally behind the staffing and whatever, but this way, we got a new approach, and we would be putting two new eyes, or four new eyes on without them speaking for or against previously. So I would support Lori and Gary for this position. We'll be on that field.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Oh, sorry, I was just going to say, just to be clear, I'm, I'm lumping myself kind of more in that boat that, that Bill suggested, not, you know, I, I'm saying that, again, like, it's, it's one of those things that have been spoken up with, I've spoken up about since the beginning, and when we started moving the directions of tourism, and wasn't trying to make that as a slight, as ultimately, all of, all of council's going to have to vote on the direction. I was just talking more about the immediate representation, working with the county that way.
Well, you know, with me, I feel that Latasha has been in, involved in this, and I think Gary has too. Tonight, I'm going to make the appointment personally, and put, give it to Latasha and Gary. So I hope that you all can do a good job and represent the town very well.
I will. Thank you, Gene.
Just point of clarification, Mr. Mayor. So you're not asking for council's opinion on this, you're making the appointment?
I am.
How, how does that work? Shouldn't council decide on who's actually going to be appointed?
I guess they could, but tonight, as mayor, I feel that I have the obligation. We need to get on this thing, and if we keep waiting any longer, then July 1st will be here, and we still don't know where we're going. So I'd like to get this thing moving along, and with my direction, and I'd like to put Latasha and Gary on the, the committee, and so we get started working on this thing.
Mr. Mayor, with respect, I think that council was making a decision tonight on the direction that we're supposed to be going, and it's less, less about, my comment now is less about the people that we're selecting, and more about the process in which you're going about selecting our appointments. This is a decision made by council, not selected by mayor, correct?
No, I disagree. I think I have the opportunity, I think I have the power to appoint two members, and I've appointed two members tonight.
I think that you have the obligation to follow the direction of council, and if council is saying that we want to pick two members to represent the voice of council, you have an obligation to uphold that vote, do you not?
Uh, no. I feel that I have the obligation right now to make the appointment, and...
Mr. Mayor, I respectfully disagree with you on this matter. This is not a board that you have appointed for action. In that case, you do have that capability when you appoint, say, a, a board to look into an issue or whatever. This is being promulgated by the Board of Supervisors and the town council. So it's a completely different option here that takes you out of the picture. That's my opinion at this point.
My final wording, or my final thought process on this is also, I did spend time with Dolores after that joint tourism council meeting as well, and I do have a good rapport with the Board of Supervisors, and I don't know, like, that seems to be getting thrown out there, and I'm not opposed to any of the options that have been presented, and really thought that Carrie did a good job with all the research that she did. So I'm not going to go in there and be like, I demand that the town hold all of the power forever, because that's not feasible. So I feel like I'm being almost punished for speaking out, for being passionate. It's like, well, do you sit back and not say anything, so just in case an opportunity comes up for a board, then you're on the board? Like, I don't, I don't think that's fair.
Council Thompson, Councilman Seelock again.
Yep.
I took the same position you did, and you and I voted against it, and that's why I think that you and I should step aside. In my case, I have too many other irons in the fire for council business, and like I said, you and I took a position on staffing that other board members did not. And this is a completely different option than what you and I... And this is a completely different option than what you and I um, approached. And we voiced our opinion on it. So that's why I say you and I should step aside and let some new voice occur in this matter.
All right, let me just put it out there, cuz this is the way I am. But like, all right, so you can say I'm not officially on the committee, but I'm still gonna be talking to all of those guys, and it is what it is.
Latasha, I think you're still on the committee. As far as I'm concerned, I think I have the right to appoint you to, to be on this committee, unless I'm over, overruled by someone else other than the council.
Cuz me and Dolores talked about it when we, after the joint tourism committee, and we're like, you know, we should have people on there from both of our things, and you and I should both, you know, jump on it. And I was like, yeah, that's a good idea. And so like, there was some conversations. There was no animosity there, and it wasn't like she's, you know, saying my way is the, or my original thoughts were the best thoughts or anything like that. It's just open discussion, the ability to change your mind from getting new information. And I don't think it's fair considering that I was also the first one to say I would do it. I, like I said, I attended all the meetings. I went to the visitor center. I met with Carrie. So I've done groundwork, footwork, and like, everybody's like, that doesn't really matter. We're just upset or not upset, but we don't think that you could go because you were passionate about something.
Nobody's, nobody's saying, uh, so a couple of different things. Nobody's uh, saying that there's any animosity. Nobody's being punished. It's a council consent, um, consensus on who represents the group at the committee. Um, the implication that nobody else is doing any kind of research or speaking with Board of Supervisors or um, understanding how tourism works within the town. Um, I, I may perhaps you're not implying that, but the implication that nobody else is doing that is false. So there are a lot of other people working on this as well. Um, again, never meant to be a slight, but at the end of the day, I think that council has to have a consensus on this. That's what I'm getting at more than anything, Mr. Mayor. I don't think that you can unilaterally just appoint who you want to represent council because you say so. Um, and I'm willing to challenge that, and I know Doug's not on the call tonight, but you can say whoever you want tonight, but that's not gonna be an official stance until there, Doug challenge, uh, Doug weighs in on this.
It'll be fine. I'll talk to Doug tomorrow and, uh, yeah. I, I.
Mr. Mayor, uh, Mr. Mr. Napier's here with me.
All right, Doug, can you give us a rendering on this?
Give me a few minutes. I'm looking it up right now.
In the, in the meantime, I think that um, I think that um, Bill, uh, myself and Latasha um, have commented, and I know as awkward as it might seem, um, I do think that Gary and Lori need to weigh in on that.
How much, excuse me, go ahead, Lori.
I, I was just gonna say, this is Councilman Cockrell. Um, I'm willing to represent the council on this committee. Um, if that's what, you know, my fellow councilmen are interested in me doing. Uh, I, I do have an interest in it. It sounds like we all do. We all have from the beginning. Um, I, you know, I, I, I'm, I'm more than willing to do this. I realize that um, that I'm the newest member on the council, uh, but I'm, I'm more than willing to do this. I, I, but I, I don't wanna have controversy with others. I, I, I would hope any board that any of us would be on, we would actually be representing each other. Um, and maybe, you know, we would be representing what each other feels about the vote. You know, what we wanted to do to move forward, no matter who's representing us. Um, so I, you know, maybe it would behoove us to discuss, you know, if we, as a council, have a particular option that we like better than others, um, you know, may, maybe we should be thinking about that or, or I guess we should wait until we meet with the county. But uh, they didn't really say in their meeting that they had a preference. I think they just wanted to appoint a couple of members to work with us. Um, I, I'm willing and able. That's, that's all I wanna offer to this.
Doug, have you found out anything yet?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
This is um, Gary, Councilman Gillespie. Um, I, I was very interested in doing this um, when I heard, I, I too have been following it. And um, just kinda sitting back and far and um, and, and just, just taking notes on, on this thing. You know, this is, this is very important. And, and no matter what anybody says, I, I think there are pre uh, preconceived notions about this thing. And, and I, I feel like I, I would come into this with, with an open set of eyes on it. Um, I just um, you know, uh, just wanting to, to, to get in and, and do something positive here. Um, and um, I, I think, Mr. Mayor, I, 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 and with, with no ill-respect or disrespect to you, I think this should be a matter that's left up to council. Um, I think they should choose who, who represents. Um, that's the way it's been done in the past for, for every, every single one of these appointments. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Uh, Doug, if you say I can, then I'll concede, but otherwise, my motion still stands as far as Latasha and uh, Gary.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, he has uh, gone to his office to get an extra file. Uh, so if I could suggest that we uh, come back to this item or talk about any other aspects of tourism or FY21 budget or move on to the next item, he's still um, finalizing his research right now.
Yeah, I agree with it, yeah.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I'm still a little, Councilman Seelock here. I'm a little concerned and confused just a tad. I thought we all took a look at option 3B, and that was the consensus of the group. Did I miss something?
Councilman Seelock, this is, this is, uh, I thought what we were doing is we got the presentation, the county got the presentation. There's been a request from the county to, so that, you know, we can kind of expedite this process, that they take a couple of their members of the Board of Supervisors, we take a couple of members of council, um, and let the four of them work towards selecting the right option, working together to select the right option since this be a joint initiative.
I thought we were under 3B. I mean, I, I strongly support 3B, but.
Yeah, Jake, I thought that was the same, what I thought as well. Uh, Matt, uh, let's go to the FY budget uh, at this time. Has anybody got any comments on the budget?
Yeah, and the reason I put this on, Mr. Mayor, members of council, is it's on for a public hearing at the next regular meeting, and so just wanted to give council an opportunity to have any other questions before the public hearing.
Okay, any, any questions? Okay, let's go to three then, while Doug's looking this up. Town managers interview process. Bill, you'll take this.
Okay, um, at this point in time, we have nine candidates. Um, the headhunter has given me two additional um, candidates that have completed all their paperwork. And he suggested, and I strongly agreed, so I said, include that data, and then the council can review that. My instructions from you all, the way I fully understood it, was that we wanted to review all candidates, whether they, they met the cut line or not. Um, so I said, include those two, and next Wednesday, we have to determine who would be our selection to interview. And my question to you all, I sent you an email on the statement about the two additional, so we're, uh, if we include those two, it'd be 11 candidates, and you'll get that as well from uh, the headhunter. Uh, the process is next Wednesday, we start narrowing down um, the candidates. So what is your um, preference? Mine would be that we would rank the individuals first, second, third, and narrow it down somewhere between three to five top candidates. And then we would determine which ones we want to interview. Now, the interview process would be either a WebEx or do you wanna go to a full um, bring them in for an interview? Or formal interview rather than the WebEx? I'm kind of uh, leaning to whatever um, the consensus of the council, and then I'll follow those um, directions. Could you take some time and give me, give me your thoughts so I can narrow this thing down so we can?
Council, Councilman Seelock, um, this is, this is Jake. I like what you laid out. I think that's great. Um, I would suggest, um, if we go to a rank, um, and we get to a top five, that council have an opportunity to discuss those top five, and then perhaps get to our top two, three out of those five, and set up as a first round, uh, perhaps video conferencing or, or phone call or video conferencing. Um, because we may decide out of those top two or three that maybe one or two of them didn't really do it for us, and we wanna go through the next two in that five, that group of five. So um, um, I think the way you've la- laid it out has been great. I would just suggest video conferencing before we start bringing them all in person.
Correct. It could be, get quite expensive. Okay, the way Jake played it out, the top five.
Vice Mayor Seelock, I, I, um, I, I concur. I, I think uh, to be able to rate them uh, through the top five, um, that, that'll give us um, a, a, a strong candidate list, and, and I also agree. Maybe from that five, we go to the video conferencing as well, and, and maybe dwindle that down to possibly two or three. Um, because again, and um, I, I think uh, I've expressed these concerns earlier myself that, you know, um, flying a whole bunch of people here to front Royal and uh, and, and lodging can get expensive for our taxpayers. Um, so we wanna be sure, um, the people who, who, who we, you know, in, in the top three, I, I would say, um, is, is definitely on, on our short list, uh, before we start um, doing that process. Thank you.
Councilman Cockrell, what's your preference?
I'm, I'm, I'm good with the, the um, what you just described. Um, the only thing I was gonna ask is, so you're saying the additional people that we were gonna add, that you wanted us to review, is Baker Tilly gonna get that information to us before next Wednesday?
Yes, yes. As soon as I can get it to you, I will have them get it to you.
Okay, cuz it is quite a bit to review, and it's such an important decision. I just wanna make sure we have enough, we all have enough time to, to look through everything. So our, our purpose between now and next Wednesday then is to narrow our choices down to five, like to rate them, and then next Wednesday, we'll all come together and try to narrow it down to five, and then narrow it down to two to three before we start asking people to, to uh, come for an in-person interview. Is that what you're suggesting?
That's correct.
Yep, that works for me. I think, I think too with everything else that's going on right now, um, asking people to come here, you know, that, that's gonna be a challenge too. So we wanna make sure that we've got our, got it narrowed down to who we're really interested in.
Councilman Thompson, what's your viewpoint? Latasha?
It was in a different screen. I was reading something. Um, I, I agree that we should whittle it down before bringing people in. We don't want that extra expense. In the top five, then getting down to two or three and doing it that way, sounds good.
So it sounds like we've got a consensus. Mr. Mayor, do you concur as well?
Yeah, I agree. Uh, you and I talked about this morning. Uh, I just wanna make sure that everybody's ready to talk about these next Wednesday evening, uh, so that we can make a decision, cuz time's getting short, and we need to make a decision for, or too much longer. So if everybody, if everybody's okay with that, Bill, as far as I'm concerned.
Okay, I got it. Uh, one final point. I will get ahold of Steve and make sure that you have those additional two candidates, either by paper or on the uh, huddle or email to you or mail to you in some process. So you get the two additional candidates. Uh, the second point was that next week when we're on conferencing, um, I, I'm thinking I'm going to have to uh, create a form so we can tally how this uh, process goes when we narrow it down to two or three. So be prepared to rank them and come up with your top five individuals, and then at that point, next week, we will uh, narrow it down to two to three candidates for the interview process.
Okay, Councilman Seelock, can we, um, would, would it be okay if maybe everybody just submitted their candidates by, or their top five by noon on Wednesday, and we just start from there? You'll have the tally.
That would be great if we can do that.
And then we could, I mean, there's obviously still, it's open for debate, and we can move a few, few things around or whatever. If there's close ties or something like that, I would be interested in knowing if um, if there were people who ended up ranking the sixth and seventh, they were close or something along those lines.
Okay, um, is the town manager still on?
Yes, sir, still here.
Uh, will Tina be back next week?
Yes, sir.
Could she tally a sheet with all the selection by process?
Right.
Have that ready for us for our discussion on Wednesday evening?
Yeah, we can do whatever you like. Of course, she doesn't know who any of the candidates are.
Mr. Councilman Seelock, I, I'm thinking that maybe the best way to do this would actually be to work through Baker Tilly. Maybe we should be sending Steve, um, maybe we should be sending Steve our top five and let him take our information and rank it. Would, wouldn't that be a, would that be a better way to go and?
I like that.
Well, that's fine with me. I can, I can praise Steve with that as well. If that's the way the council wants to go, that, that's fine with me.
And then one other thing I just wanted to say about getting us the information. You know, this is Thursday, and tomorrow's Friday, Monday's a holiday, so hopefully um, Baker Tilly can get it to us. I mean, I, I, I'm doubtful that they can get it to us by mail. Um, because if we won't be getting it until Tuesday, I, I feel like that might be a little late. I mean, I know we have till Wednesday at noon, but I've found like, there's a, there's quite a bit of breadth of information that we've get, been given, and I would like to have as much time as possible to review all of them.
I understand. It's gonna, you know, it's gonna create some homework.
Correct.
Um, uh, Bill, did, did, was Baker Tilly contracted to narrow it down to a final three or a final five?
Yes, they did. They will do that.
So are they gonna give a recommendation for a final three, and we're gonna say, out of these nine, here are our five, and see if they line up?
Well, I didn't approach him in that matter.
Well, I mean, my point is, are we, are we trying to come up with our final five, and Baker Tilly is also narrowing down to what they would recommend as their final three? That's the part I'm trying to understand.
He and I discussed that in the process, but he took away the same thing I did. This was a council decision, and they didn't want input, cuz I offered that up uh, one of the first discussions I had. It's similar to the selection process when we, where we had five headhunters or seven, whatever the magic number was, that came in, uh, came down, no staff involved. Uh, the council has this responsibility. We're gonna do it. So Steve Minor walked away with the same impression that I have, that council wanted to um, narrow down the selection process.
No, so that's the part I'm confused on because we hired them and it was spelled out in their contract that they were gonna take it down to a certain number and I don't have it in front of me, so I could be off on this. But my my memory is that they were gonna take it down to the final five or so and we would start choosing who to interview from there. And so the only reason I'm bringing that up is because I don't mind looking at the nine applicants and narrowing it down, but I'd be very interested to hear Baker Tilly's recommendation of top five candidates, if that was what we contracted them to do. But if I'm if I'm wrong on that, that's fine. I just I thought I remembered it a little bit differently.
Well, I can have them present that as well and then you got two pieces of paper to look at.
Okay, yeah, that'd be great.
Because they did, in our discussions, we discussed narrowing it down to five, just as conclusion we came to tonight.
I just wanted uh Councilman Seelock, I just wanted to mention, and I think I had shared this with uh Mr. Minor, that um kind of along the same lines of what Councilman Mazes said, that um you know, we we did contract them and spent, you know, quite a bit of of money to use their expertise um and their knowledge of trying to find the right fit using our citizen surveys and our input. So I would agree. I'd like to know, I would like to know who they feel would be their five narrowing, especially since part of the contract is guaranteeing us that that um that the the person we select would be sticking around for at least a couple of years um as part of their guarantee, that they're guaranteeing that they're gonna choose the right person for the job for us. So I feel I would like to see what their input is as well.
So I'm looking at um page twenty-five of the uh contract here with Baker Tilly or their their presentation they provided, not the actual contract. And it says Baker Tilly will compare the applications and the top ten to fifteen candidates will be identified as semifinalists. And that's for us to help boil down. And of course, we got down to the nine because the other forty like basically dropped out, so.
So Bill, it looks to me like uh we need to look at all that. And uh also uh make sure if you talk, when you talk to Steve, that we get a video of each the other two candidates. You wish.
I will consult with him immediately after this meeting.
Okay, do you think you've got everything you need?
I've got everything I need at this point. Yes, sir.
Okay, Bill. Thanks for everything. Uh let's go to item four, closure.
Mr. Mayor, do you want to, did you want Mr. Napier's opinion?
Well, I can, but I thought maybe some of them had to leave quickly, so yeah, go ahead and give you a opinion.
Sorry for uh, this is this is Chris. I'm I'm sorry for joining it late, but um just wanted to let you know I'm here.
All right, this is Doug Napier. I've looked at everything we can look at, uh and this is town code uh four point eight. I can't find anything anywhere to contradict this. Uh four point eight, mayor is presiding officer. The mayor is the presiding officer of the council, dot, 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 uh shall appoint all committees. So I the mayor appoints um appoints who he wants for uh for the tourism committee.
Thank you, Doug. Again, I'll point Latasha and Gary.
I respect that appointment, uh Mr. Mayor, um but I did want to make a note that you had a majority of council uh recommending different appointments that you went against.
Okay, so noted.
That's not surprising.
Uh item four, uh closure of Main Street.
Uh yes, Mr. Mayor, we are um um moving forward at the at the uh Monday at the Monday meeting, we just um it I got uh got the general consensus of council that you were interested in closing Main Street. Uh staff and I have been working aggressively towards that. Um we have um we've identified approximately seventy-five percent of the main streets that have been contacted, uh support the the activity, even even some restaurants that are outside of the area are supportive and businesses that are outside are supportive of 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 the closure. Due to some um town code and and following the letter of the law in in all aspects, um it was recommended that we find a uh an individual to formally pull the permit to uh close the street. Uh the the individual that was identified was uh William Huck with Family Fun Day, Inc. Um staff uh agreed that was a good choice. Uh within thirty seconds of the request, Mr. Huck uh graciously uh le- lifted the opportunity to help and and he's been, he has been a lot of help, uh a tremendous amount of help, I would say. To to uh give you a perspective of what's gonna happen, uh we're closing Kid Lane. Uh that's been already closed and Main Street, Chester Street, the gazebo will be closed from Saturday, two P M until Tuesday, seven A M. And uh restaurants will be allowed to expand their businesses into town property. And they're required by A B C laws, should they serve alcohol, they're be required to uh have a boundary. Uh I have been in contact on several occasions with the A B C agent, uh had very, very good conversation, as has the uh assistant town attorney and um has given us very good guidance. I think uh everyone has been instructed to follow executive order sixty-one, maintain social distancing. And um again, there will be, this is not an event, this is not a festival. Uh there'll be no alcohol served outside of the designated areas that have been uh permitted by the A B C uh the uh agency. Trying to think, uh also as part of this, uh uh the theater, uh the town has loaned the um uh movie theater on Main Street. They they're a projection, they're outdoor projection unit and they will be showing movies on um Saturday night and Sunday night and perhaps Monday night um and selling concessions, so um I'm I'm happy to see that taking place. Uh once again, I want to thank Mr. Huck and Family Fun Day, Inc. for really stepping up. We've gotten tables and chairs donated. We've gotten some uh some tents donated. We made around a couple tents. We have uh four additional Johnny Blues have been ordered. We have six hand sanitizing stations scattered throughout uh Main Street and the gazebo area. Um so I believe I believe it's gonna be a uh a safe um a safe closure and I think it's gonna benefit the restaurant and businesses tremendously.
Uh Matt, would you give us uh the timeline as far as it's close? When are we gonna close when they go back up?
Yes, sir. We're gonna close. Uh the Kid Lane has already been closed um to vehicular traffic. Uh Main Street, Chester, the portion of Chester and the gazebo will close Saturday, two P M and will reopen Tuesday morning, seven A M.
Thank you, Matt. Any discussion?
Matt, uh Mr. Teedrick, um how many weeks do you suppose this is going to go on?
Uh that's a good question, Mr. Gillespie. I I'll uh my thought would be uh Tuesday at the staff meeting, we'll do an after action and kind of get an assessment of of the event. Um I'll talk to business owners that participated and get an assessment from them. Uh there's been some discussion about possibly doing it again the following weekend. Um or if um if uh if it seems to be such a a great success and and businesses are are pleased, we could close it until until the governor lifts the restrictions so we can close it during the week.
Well, I'm in full agreement uh with this uh Mr. Teedrick. Um the only thing is 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 we're gonna have to keep a close eye because there are some other businesses there on Kid Lane um that if when the governor gives the okay, um I'm sure they're gonna want use of that alley and it and it's kind of tough if there are tables and stuff that are set up um along there. Um just just that concern going forward.
Yes, sir. I spoke to one of the um I spoke to one of the businesses that um joins Kid Lane and um he I had a very good conversation with him. He was very supportive of of a temporary closure um but did not want to see it going on ongoing. And and I think frankly, Kid Lane is a, in my opinion, that would not stay very long. Um I do think there's businesses there that need the vehicular traffic to get to their storage space. And I and I think if if we do Main Street, I think the businesses that could use Kid Lane can also just use Main Street successfully, so I I agree with you.
I I agree wholeheartedly. Um the only other thing is um, you know, I just want to stress that this is just temporary. Uh you know how um I guess somebody picked up in the media that uh town is talking about closing Main Street and I just I just want to, you know, reiterate, this is just temporary. This is to help out some of our businesses that that are in dire need. And uh nobody is advocating at this point to to turn Main Street into a walking mall. But I I just want to thank y'all for all the all the work that you guys have done and and to setting this in in motion. Give everybody a thank you, please.
Yeah, I'd like to thank everybody too and I think it's um great that the idea was able to come to fruition and then it'll be really telling at the uh staff meeting uh getting the feedback from the businesses and seeing how their revenues were and I I think it's gonna be positive, so I'm looking forward to a good weekend and hanging out downtown.
Mr. Teedrick, uh Councilman Seelock, uh did I miss the point of the movie venture at the gazebo area as well?
Uh n- n- no, sir. They they've decided to set it up uh pretty much in front of the theater uh at um just at dusk and so uh it is gonna be up and running with the town equipment that we're gonna loan and he's gonna s- sell concessions.
Okay.
On Main Street.
So Mr. Teedrick, uh as far as the movies go, um he'll he'll be um offering concessions just in case citizens would ask, is the movie, to show the movie, there obviously there's no way to have a charge for that, right, or no?
That's a good question. I actually had a conversation with the the property owner today and um I I suggested passing the hat and collecting donations and he very graciously said, you know, that's not the way I operate. And I said, well, I said, let me see if I can whisper in Mr. Huck's ear, he wouldn't have a problem passing the hat for you. So I think I I think of collecting donations would be a uh, that's what I plan to do, so I I I think worthy worthy good way to handle it is just collect donations and thank him for his years. I mean, what, twenty years of of activity there on Main Street, if not longer?
Yes, I I would agree and um especially with with his sharing of of the revenue he's lost in his business, that would be a great opportunity for people to support him as well as purchasing concessions.
Yes, ma'am.
One other thing, Mr. Teo- Mr. Mayor, before we um end, I just wanted to say, Mr. Mr. Seelock, I um I wanted to also say thank you to you for all the work that you put in working with Baker Tilly and being our liaison. Um I would be remiss to not uh thank you for your going above and beyond to keep us informed and help us through navigating through this process. Thank you a lot, Bill.
Uh Bill, uh make sure that we get Steve's uh email address. I don't think we've got that yet.
Okay.
We may have it, but I don't, I'll send it.
I'll send it out in an email.
Okay, so we can respond back with the the people we're looking at, looking at, okay?
Good. Thank you, Councilman Cockrell. Appreciate it.
Hey, Bill, I also want to thank you for doing all that you do also. Really, you do a lot.
Yeah, thank you. I'm sorry. I didn't I didn't mention that, but yeah, you've been great with uh this whole hiring process and it's appreciated.
You 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 do more than our hair, so I appreciate it.
Uh isn't that like out of order or something? Didn't we discuss this before? I don't know. It's weird.
So right, I appointed Bill to to take care of this, so that's okay.
It's your fault.
Thank you, Bill. Matt, you got anything else you want to bring up for anyone?
No, sir. Thank you.
Okay. In that case, the meeting's adjourned.